Okay, we're calling to order the BOT, regular BOT meeting for AMSA on Thursday, October 25th at 2018 at 6:30. This meeting is being recorded. And just going over the agenda really quickly, we're going to have opening items. Then we're going to go before any committee reports to a report out on the finance and audit, I'm sorry, on the audit results for this past year. And unfortunately, the agenda has it misprinted. It says 2016-2017, it should be 2017-2018. Then we'll go on to the various faculty and education committee updates. We'll have the ED report, chair business where we will talk about strategic planning, SMART goals, and a transition in the executive committee in terms of the treasurer role. Then we'll go on to governance, development, committee updates, and finally, we will wrap up. We will have executives session today, and we will not be returning from it, during which we'll be discussing litigation strategies and considering the purchase and lease of real property that is being held in executive session so as not to compromise our position. So with that, I will ask, did everybody have a chance to review minutes? Or is there anybody who did not review minutes prior to this meeting? Okay, that's great. Thank you all for doing your homework. So, does anybody have any issues with the minutes or updates necessary? No? Do we have a, okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Okay, motion approved. From that, so do we have any public comments today?
No, we didn't.
Okay, great. So with that, actually Kristin, would you like to maybe do a little intro?
Yeah, so today we have the, our audit firm is here to present the financial statements for the last fiscal year. And to bring doing that, we have Dave Kelher and we have Nicole Riley, and they're from Alexander, Aaronson, and Finning. That's our audit firm we've had for a number of years. So with that, I'd like to turn that over to you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully this will pick up okay with my microphone, so I'm not the quietest person anyway. So everybody should have a packet of materials in front of them. We do have all the documents available, but we're going to focus on really the front view here tonight. So the item that we'll spend the most time on most likely is the key financial ratios. So I'm hoping in the packets it's the first item that you have in front of you. And really from, on the audit itself, a couple of key takeaways for the board. We did have a meeting, it was about a week ago, that we met with the finance committee and reviewed the results in detail, those were the financial statements and all the required reports. So we usually streamline it a bit for the board meeting. But overall, you did have a clean audit report this year, and even better, there were no other adjustments. So the numbers that we have here tonight, those are the numbers that the finance team that we had to close the books with. So that really is telling us you're having reliable data to make your decisions on. Good news when we can say that. So summarizing on the key financial ratios, really we try to collapse as much data as we can on this first page here. So in the far two left columns, you're going to, I guess, well, it's actually the second and third from the left. The 2018 and 2017, these are going to be AMSA's financial results. And then we did pick, really, there were four schools that we picked, individual schools, and we labeled them A to D to protect the innocent, but other than school D, you have all current year activity here. And then in the far right-hand side, and this averages our charter school client base of about 28 different schools and districts. So that will give you a broader spectrum of how some of these averages for AMSA look.
Could I just ask a quick question? In terms of the schools A through D, are these the same schools that were used last year, or these are just another random set?
They're probably not the same.
Okay.
I know at least one of them definitely wasn't.
And you matched them on certain characteristics?
I think one of the main drivers we look at is really enrollment, and then even if you own or lease your building, and we'll get into school B, and they're a little bit of a hybrid this year.
Okay.
So, you know, those are the two main items we look at.
Mm-hmm.
And really in the, just stay on the top of the page, and to that point really, the first row of items here, it's almost a little bit of a bio on each school. So what we try to do is just look at the grades served, what year they had their first academic year, and then location, you know, city or suburb, just because that can make a difference in sending district tuitions. And then roughly square feet of facility, number of employees, and number of students. So for the individual schools, I would say enrollment-wise, probably A and D are closest individually to AMSA.
Mm-hmm.
And then that far right-hand column, and again, that data in the far right-hand column, that is 2017 data for average, but on average, our schools are around 660 students. So just looking, and again, going right below the number of students, your current ratio, really what that's saying is your ability to cover your current obligations. So that 5.5 that you see there is saying for every dollar of current liabilities that AMSA owes, you have about $5.5 to pay it off. And really, of that 6.2 million, I'd say roughly 85% of that is liquid cash, you know, readily available to pay current obligations. And again, looking at some of the other schools of the average, and maybe going from the average in the far right, you have on average in our client base last year, about four to one for a current ratio. So again, you know, the higher the better, the more liquid you want. So you're, I'd say higher than our average school that we see, and even all the individual schools here, you're running a more liquid operation than they are. So that's good news. And I think what we talked to a little bit in the past with the board and with the finance committee is, I know really what you've done this year is, again, in the current assets, and this is probably a good place to note this, that in 2017, AMSA had 10.4 million of current assets. So again, you used up a good amount of that to buy the building for about $4.3 million.
Dave, if I may ask, in terms of current ratio, is there a number, so we're in a good space, but is there a point at which it gets kind of like too high?
So, and really, I look at this, and usually I've just talked with another board tonight about, you know, around six months. So again, where it's too high, we know what you're trying to do is further solidify your facility situation. So, you know, sometimes we would advise, you know, would you want to get more of a return on that? But knowing what you're trying to do with the facility, we think it makes sense where you're at right now. Because you don't want to lock it up and then have access to it should something important come up you might want to purchase. And then in the second item below that current ratio, your debt to equity, really the inverse of the current ratio here, that you're lower, the better here, saying that .11 is saying for every dollar of net position, or think of equity if you want to strip out the charter school terminology, every dollar of equity AMSA has, you only have 11 cents of liabilities. So again, that's a good advantage of paying cash for the building, that you don't have debt taken out on it. So again, I think on all of these, I'll work from the outer right column back in. On average basis across our client base, about 1.4. So again, showing some leverage there for schools trying to buy their facilities and ultimately taking out debt. And I do want to make sure we at least note school B here, because I know the questions came up at the finance committee, and we do want to make sure these aren't showing up as typos. That debt to equity of 10 to 1, that school really, they're in a somewhat strange place at year-end, that they still leased their facility, they have under agreement to buy that facility, and they've already drawn down the debt. So it's really, effectively at this point, they haven't done all the construction, but they already have the debt on their books. So it's a little bit of an anomaly that, and I think Kristin and the finance committee were, you know, I know we don't back in and made sure we had our ducks in a row on that, since leasing and having a technical debt to equity ratio doesn't make a lot of sense on the face of it, so. Your composition of operating revenues, and again, looking overall at AMSA this year, you did have about $14.8 million of revenue for 2018, and again, you were about $400,000 higher than last year there. So again, as you have had over time, you know, roughly 92-93% of AMSA's operating revenue is from, really, your tuition from sending districts. Across our client base in total in that far right-hand column, we do see a little less dependency on tuition at about 86%. And really, those other schools are able to make up the difference, both through government grants, so those are really funds through DESI, can be entitlement grants, those are about, almost 6% of the revenues on average, and another 5% from more private contributions. So think of more fundraising, foundation philanthropy items like that.
Dave, do you by chance know, in terms of for the average where it is 5%, like what's the split between contributions versus private contributions versus grants, government-oriented grants?
Well, the government-oriented grants, they do show up in a separate line here in that outside column.
Oh, okay.
So if you see the 5.7, that is the government grants line item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even see that. Okay.
No, that's all right.
Yep, okay.
What does net of interagency grants mean?
So really what we're trying to get at there is, just since the financial statements themselves show gross numbers of the school and the foundations, in this case of all the schools, the foundation raises money, gives it to the school, we're taking out that piece.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I could just make one comment, so just a general one, as far as development is concerned, and we're focused on that, when you look at the average of 5%, I mean, we got a lot of opportunity, it sounds like.
Right.
Just to come up to the average, so that's good. Okay, great.
And again, you see different schools with different mixes, because I know when I look at school C and see 12% of government grants, you know, they don't make the private philanthropy side as much of a priority there.
Yeah, and they're in a little bit of a different situation, because they get, their government grants includes transportation, they get transportation funded by the state. So that's grossing up that number a little bit.
Every school has their own unique story, so. Next item down on the operating expense side, really, and again, we take out some of the, you know, there's the captions here, less in-kind pension and less in-kind transportation. So really, for all the schools here, we're trying to boil things down to what you're paying for cash. So on a, think of it as a cash flow basis, AMSA was just short of $14.5 million this year in total expenses compared to about $13.6 million last year. So the bulk of that increase was really in the personnel and related line items there. Again, you were up almost a little over $700,000, about $740,000 there. So looking at this as a percentage of your operating budget, you see about 66, little over 66% for this current year, 65% last year. And again, all of the different schools, I mean, it's somewhat wildly different percentages there, but I know in the far right-hand column, seeing that 66.6% for personnel and related, I mean, that's telling me that you're pretty much right on target there for your personnel-related costs, at least what we're seeing across a broader sample of schools. The one area which again is down a little bit this year with the purchase of the building, which is good news, is just your occupancy percentage. That in the far left for AMSA, you're about a percent below last year as a percentage of your operating budget. So I think that purchase came into play as the last quarter of the year. So you, basically, your rent stopped at that point, and you at least got to have just the operating costs. So that 15% comparatively to the charter schools we work with in that far right column is about 11%. So you're still a little bit higher than the average, but at least going the right There's a very skinny box here, and the change is in unrestricted net position, so this is really your operating surplus this year, if you think about it. So off your operating revenue of about $14.8 million, you ran an operating surplus each of these years of right around $860,000. So again, very consistent there. And the one item that doesn't show up in the operating surplus, but does overall in the audit, is there was really the last cleanup, I'll call it, of the common area maintenance charges with the landlord. So there was a non-cash revenue item of just short of $500,000 in addition to this operating surplus, really taking liabilities off AMSA's books. So again, I think you can see here, and again, it's a different picture with each school, but looking at, on, across an average basis of all the schools, about $11.2 million of operating revenue, on average, we're seeing about a $566,000 surplus. So I'd say you're probably running maybe a little bit above the average if I had calculated it out and, you know, really did an average as a percentage here. Actually, my brain can work quick enough. So that's about 5% on average for the other schools, and AMSA is about 5.8. So you're running a little bit above, which is not a bad thing when you get to the working capital and the reserves carried over at the end of the year.
On dependence on tuition?
Yes.
Does expenses covered by tuition tell us anything different from pupil tuition in the composition of operating revenue? Is that really the same story?
I think it's a similar story that, and again, it can, depending on how much your expenses grow in a given year, that expenses covered by tuition can fluctuate a good amount. So, and this, these two years for AMSA are a good example, actually, that your tuition really only went up about $230,000, and your operating costs on a net basis were up about $840,000. So that expense covered is, the 95% is still very good. So we'll actually see in the next page here, just how DESI looks at it, and they generally want over 90% covered by tuition.
So what drives the variation from a high of 108% to a low of 86?
So really, the biggest drivers there, and maybe I'll just look at the 86% here and jump in on that one, really, the, again, I think that transportation, the government grants, because this is looking purely at expenses covered by just tuition, having that $2.5 million of really government grants there, that covers a good part of, I imagine, almost all of that school's transportation expenses.
I see, okay.
And then the 108%, I think really with those sending districts, they just have higher rates, really per pupil, rates that that school is spending on the students.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome. And I think on average, and thank you for bringing it up, because I sometimes skip over that line, I guess that's why I should wear my glasses all the time, but the average for all the schools we see is right around 90%. So even with the change in AMSA's percentage, you're still above the average for covering costs by tuition.
So question for you, is that sort of a marker, as you mentioned, DEES normally looks for 90%. So is that something that we should generally make sure that we're targeting to ensure we stay over 90%, or if it looks like we're going to drop below, then we need to make some adjustments from a?
So I, I'll answer this two ways, because I know DEES wants you to have over 90%, and, you know, that's, I'll call it a regulated way of looking at it, that they want tuition to cover the bulk of the cost. I know personally, just thinking of other clients we work with at our charter schools, things like private fundraising, if you can diversify your revenue, I personally always think that's a good thing. So if this went down a little bit because you raised more outside dollars.
Still a good scenario.
It's still a good scenario. And I think again, as long as, you know, and we'll look at some benchmarks of, you know, really high, low, and moderate risk of how DESI looks at it, you definitely have good cushion here.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I guess if you raise more money, you could always spend more, and it stays the same. I don't think I'd be a problem.
That's always true. And just really, the next item down, it starts with the number of students, but I think this just really does boil down a, almost a per student, and then a, you know, almost a per full-time equivalent for personnel costs at the bottom of the page. So, you know, looking at things more on a rate basis here, and again, with every school varying with their sending districts, I know here in particular, I like to go over to that far right column, it's more of a total average here. So AMSA this year, your tuition per student, just under $14,000. And I know the average we saw for fiscal '17 was about $14,500, so you're pretty close to that average there. The other schools that we work with, they do tend to have more government funding per student, so again, that's that other really entitlement, whether it's entitlement grants, transportation, other funding from DESI that you, you know, those schools have that AMSA doesn't have a lot of, really due to the sending districts involved. But again, you can see total expense per student, and again, it's not surprising to me that based on if you have more government funding, you can spend more per student. So the average is $16,000 a student with 15, say $15,500 of government funding compared to AMSA, about $14.6 compared to $14.1. So interestingly, the spread between those is pretty much the same, that there's about a, you know, I'll say a $500-$600 difference per student with both AMSA and the average. A couple lines down here, the occupancy cost per square foot, I think this is something we've always talked about with AMSA, that still running quite high compared to the averages that we're seeing out there, I think both when you look at the individual schools as well as the average. So AMSA both years, about $25 a square foot. For occupancy here, again, just to clarify, that includes really all operating costs of the building. So you've got your rent, repairs, and maintenance, utilities, insurance, really fully loaded costs for everyone. And for those that borrow, it would include their interest on the facility borrowings as well. So I think the average we see is about $17 per school, per square foot, so, you know, I think that's the area from a cost standpoint that hopefully you can see improvement on in the future.
Question on that line item, how do you handle the leasing of the four kicks facility in that calculation?
So that is...
Maybe that's a program, a direct student cost?
That isn't direct student cost, I believe that's included in program expenses. So the rent and related, I believe, is just all of the, call it the school operating facility costs.
Okay, so...
So it should actually be a larger...
So actually, if you, if you, if you included that as a occupancy cost, our ratios would be higher.
It would be higher, yes.
But our, oh, a different, you know, just moving from one pocket to another, our program costs would go less, but our occupancy cost is even higher.
Well, the ratios known are sort of going to be higher depending on how much, how large you consider four kicks to be.
Oh, right, well, yeah, depends on whether you, whether you add four kicks, square footage into the calculation.
Yeah, if you're consistent, that's what we'd have to do, because...
Why would you choose to put it in program versus occupancy?
I think just over time, I know it was, just seemed more running, part of the athletic programs, and I guess, and I hadn't thought about it, because it's an inconsistency if a school had a facility that say had, you know, gym didn't have to pay for it. I think that was the logic. Then really, the last item in this box, the personnel cost, the number of employees. So again, looking at that average number of employees for the year of about 140, your personnel cost, which again includes taxes and benefits as well, about $69,000 this year compared to about $64,000 last year. And again, I think you can see across, you know, really different schools and different sending districts, you can see ranges from almost $74,000 to a low of about $57,000, but on average, we're seeing the low 60s across our client base. Then just the last item on this page, and again, maybe we'll go down the very bottom box, and in that month's operating expenses in net position, at a monthly operating expense of about almost $1.2 million from a cash flow perspective, comparing that to your unrestricted operating net position of $5 million, you're about four and a quarter months of reserves at this point. So really, that's, compared to last year, you had seven and three-quarters months of reserves on a slightly less operating expense base. So the big change there, again, taking the cash, you basically made that change from working capital to facility. And then looking at the other schools that even with that change, four and a quarter, you know, was, and again, it's quite a different mix of each individual school that, again, school B, which again, taking out a good amount of debt in the recent past here, that .07, again, a very light working capital ratio, and again, you've got a high of nine for school D. On average, we're seeing around five months of working capital for the schools we work with. So again, you're right there, you just made a major capital investment, so.
And the unrestricted operating net position, is that all liquid? Or does that include equity in?
Yes, so of that, and again, it...
For us it is.
...of the liabilities, is about $5 million of cash.
Okay. And other schools that own property, are they... So are there illiquid assets in the, in this for some of the other schools we're compared to?
Right, so school B, when I see them at .07, they just may, you know, most of their equity right now is tied on the facility.
Correct.
So that's the...
So they've got assets, but they don't have cash?
That's right, it's basically not working capital, it's really tied on.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do you see a difference in, looking at schools that are renting versus schools that own their own facilities, do you see a different months, months' operating expenses portfolio? I mean, I said, does, if a school is leasing, do they tend to have a higher or lower number, or is it just about the same, leasing or purchased facilities?
I think it honestly depends on, you know, when they get it, and really, when they came into play, because I think the other thing I didn't mention at the top, I know we, some of these schools too, when we talk about the months of reserves of the individual schools, all of the schools in this comparison are from the 90s. So they've, over time, also had more time to accumulate reserves with AMSA starting in 2005. But I think from, it doesn't show up to me as much in the working capital number this month's in reserves, but I think where it does show up, I feel like there's more cost control on that occupancy per square foot than the occupancy percentages as a percentage of your budget.
So again, maybe ask a slight variation, that's like, if, if there are schools that recently bought property, what is their typical months, months, operating months expenses free cash?
So I know as I think of one of mine that did, and they're not on this comparison, I'm going to go a little bit from memory, I think they're more in the one to two month range. Just trying to get this out of the schools I work with.
Those that I work with that have recent, are just still, I think, are more doing like complete renovations, so a lot of their, if they have the working capital to make that change, so they're not really...
Not taking a hit, really.
No, they're not.
And I think, I mean, when I look at '17 compared to '18, and I think in the years last year or prior, I think AMSA for the most part looked a lot higher on working capital than other schools, and, you know, we always... capital than other schools, and, you know, we always discuss at these meetings, I think the plan was always to invest in capital first.
Yeah.
So, I know, I feel like I haven't seen too much of a trend in owning versus leasing, and how it affects this number, except for more of the expense side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know you covered this before, could you just remind me, for grants and contributions in composition of operating revenue, where it says net of intra-agency grants, could you explain that? Does that have to do with foundations?
Yes, so that, basically what this is showing is all outside dollars that come into the school or the foundation from private giving. It takes away, if say the STEM Foundation raised money and gave it to the school, it just takes away that piece of the grants. And if it's going from an entity that's in the financials to another entity that's in the financials, it's taking that out of the rest.
So, so just that, if I understand correctly, so let's say, okay, in 2018, we had $71,000 on that line item, so would that be inclusive of, let's say, $50,000 came to Amsa, and $21,000 went to the foundation? It would say 71 in that case?
That's right.
Yeah, it's only extended these $21,000 over to Amsa, we don't want to double count it.
Got it. Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Better words than I had. Any other questions on this first page? Really, the next item here, and I don't think we've shown this in the past, but this is effectively the DESI dashboard that usually is submitted in November after the audit cycle. And really, what this shows, and, you know, if you, I always think of this as a stoplight that meetings don't, so that's basically saying, all of these categories, and these are actually how DESI calculates them, Amsa is in the low risk in all of these categories. So, really, overall, you're not all that close to being moderate risk, I mean, I think just the, the only one that's relatively close is that percentage of total revenue expended on facilities. That low risk is 15%, and you're really right there. Otherwise, you've got a pretty good cushion on all of these ratios to remain low risk, but I know we just set this up this year, I found it helpful just to see the categories of what's moderate and what's high risk, just so you have sets how much wiggle room you have. And the good news, I don't even want to drag the board through the surplus calculation that we had in prior years, because honestly, the big takeaway this year is, I think we were somewhat close, I'd say probably up around 80% of what DESI would allow to carry over for a surplus last year. When you purchase a building, that's an eligible use of all of that, so at this point, your carryover is $431,000, DESI allows you $6.3 million. So, you're no longer close at this level. Nicole, you want to just cover a couple items on the process here?
Sure. So, the next document that you have in here, active surplus cap that Dave just mentioned, is the board report. So, this is an internal document, it's for you and management. It's basically our required community reports to the board, if there were any issues during the audit, if there were any disagreements with management, if you adopted any new accounting standards, anything basically that happened during the audit would be disclosed in here. This is pretty much a boilerplate letter from our perspective. There weren't any issues with the audit, there were no disagreements, as Dave mentioned earlier, there were no audit adjustments, so nothing's even attached to this report. It was a very, very clean audit from our perspective. What we did include on page three is just some FYIs for upcoming things, so we did ask that, as a current-year item, to think about having a write-off policy as far as is receivables go. So, I believe that management's going to be working on getting that together, it'll probably come to the board for approval. And then the other item that we noted was just an FYI on a new accounting standard that's going, that's up and coming. It will be applicable for fiscal year 2020, so you're a couple years out from that, but basically what this says is, is any long-term lease, which is now defined as any lease over one year, is going to be now classified on your balance sheet, similar to how a capital pieces is accounted for now. So, it could potentially be a big change to the look of your financial statements and how, how those leases are accounted for, so just as an FYI going forward, if you do enter into any long-term lease agreements. And that's for buildings, equipment, anything, as far as that goes. Any questions on this report? And then the last one that we have, so one page, this is the one that gets uploaded to DESI, it's called our management letter. It's really just a report on internal controls over financial reporting, and this document basically says that through our audit process, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material leases over financial reporting, internal controls over financial reporting. So, this is a clean letter, and it will get uploaded to the state for you guys, so that's what we need as well.
Those were the highlights we had, we're close to on time, so...
I'd like to thank Leona for all her hard work in putting all this together and the clean audit.
Yep.
Leona works tirelessly, tirelessly on all of this, and she does so with good share and teamwork, and keeps us in check, so thank you, Leona.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other questions?
So, Roger, if I could just confirm procedurally, do we have to go through a vote to approve the audit results or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. So, could I have motion to approve the audit results?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion so approved? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll be going on to the faculty rep monthly update with Brianna.
Yeah. All right, so we are about a week away from the end of term one, which comes to a close on next Wednesday, the 31st, and grades will be due and then posted the following week on Wednesday, November 7th. Over the past month, teachers have continued to adjust to their schedules and the new attendance procedures, it's probably been one of the bigger changes, I think I mentioned last month, but according to Mike Naraki, we've, the teachers have gotten a lot better at submitting within the first five minutes, and so clearly, it's an adjustment that everyone's been making. So, with the coming of November also brings college recommendation time, so our counseling department has been particularly busy with making sure that students are ready to submit any early applications, also following up with teachers to make sure that they have been submitting their recommendations on behalf of students. At our last all-staff meeting, the counseling department held a refresher overview on writing recommendations and introduced a new format that can alleviate some of the pressure that comes with writing these recommendations. And on a related note, the counselors are, again, going to be quite busy over the next few weeks as they're getting those final, complete applications together for students, and again, tracking down any missing pieces, so obviously, we thank them for their work on all of that. Several grade levels have gone on field trips recently. Grade six went to Mount Wachusett, grade eight went to a high and low ropes course in Berlin, grade 10 went to Salem last week, and currently, grade 11 is on an overnight trip to Camp High Rock in western Massachusetts. As I've mentioned in previous updates, these trips, which are a great community builder for students, would not be possible without the willingness of the teachers to assist in planning and chaperoning them, so many thanks to them for their efforts, as well as to Kathy Ward, who is tasked with arranging substitute coverage whenever teachers are out on these field trips. Additionally, several teacher, or sorry, several committees have benefited from the contributions of teachers more recently. This past week, the Academic Excellence Committee met for the second time to review a student satisfaction survey that will be distributed to students in grades eight through 12, and teachers are able to provide feedback on the questions and really dig down and see, you know, if the questions were sufficient and would give us the results that we'd be looking for for ascertaining whether or not students are satisfied with their academics. And additionally, the community council also met this week, which is a nice, like, cross-section of all stakeholders, including some faculty members. And last week, it's the last little piece of this, faculty and staff enjoyed our afternoon of bowling for a monthly PD, which seems to be a new annual tradition, so second year running, which this is, it's just a fun day, I think, for teachers to kind of get to hang out with one another, maybe get a little competitive as well, see hidden skills or hidden deficiencies, as well, which applies to me, I am terrible at bowling. And so, our next PD day will be held in November, on November 9th, and will feature several workshops led by other teachers. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. And next, on to the parent rep update.
Thank you. So, the minutes were correct, but a point of clarification, I did prepare the parent rep statement update last month, I just asked Liz to read it for me, so, just so we know. The only question that came up, again, was about the buildings. The parent actually was concerned that there hadn't been a formal board statement about what was going on with the buildings. So, I answered his questions, but I also had him, or I referred him to the first 10 minutes of the last family forum. Ms. Lindsay did a great summary of the status of the buildings and the negotiations and answered some questions, so I referred the parent to the first 10 minutes of that, and he was very appreciative of that. So, between the board and the administration, I think the message is getting out, but I think the theme is that everyone wishes things would be going more quickly, as everyone would. The parent forum last month went really well, like I said, the building was a question, parents were concerned about bathrooms in the upper school, which Ms. Lindsay addressed, they were all set. AP psych was a question, it's a course that was taken off the curriculum, but they're going to put it back in via online. Yep, so that was a question. Generally, it was a very positive family forum, so that went really well. And with regard to the request I put out at the PTO meeting for parents that have political connections, I have a meeting tomorrow with a woman whose, her entire family was in politics, and she was a Marlboro city counselor and a legislative aide to a rep, so I'm going to pick her brain tomorrow about, you know, how to get our voice heard and maybe what connection, connections she might have with regard to getting this pending bill hopefully heard. I know it's just sitting in a committee somewhere, but if, you know, the MSBA could put charter schools into their facility funding, that's, that would be perfect, so I'll find out more from her what she can do.
That would be welcomed.
It would be welcomed, yes.
Very much.
Yes. So, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, I think it's really great that referring people back to the first 10 minutes of the tape, is it, you know, the more we get to, we're all, we're all really reading from the same sheet.
Exactly.
And not reinterpreting what we think we meant, so to have that, those materials there, just to refer back to, is more than just entertaining.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Education committee update?
Sure. So, at our October meeting, we added our new roles of student liaison to the education committee and its liaisons, because we actually have five students who are now going to liaise with the education committee, and they'll attend meetings as they're available and will include at least one per meeting, but we did have four in attendance at our October meeting. The five individuals are Robbie Cokely, who's a senior, Nathan Lee, who is also a senior, Katie Canastraro, who is a junior, Kersey Balaji, who is a junior, and Soleil Kelly, who is a senior. So, they were actually very, very helpful, and I think that their voice is going to be very important going forward, especially because what we're going to be focused on, at least for the next few months, is looking at how we can help the administration at ways to really measure the new core values. So, we've broken up into groups and we're really looking at that, so I think that the students are really helpful in having, having that voice there, so. And then, I did just want to update you, last month, one of the things that we did was the AP test scores, and we looked at the AP test scores, including the rank within Massachusetts, and we did not have the rank yet for the 2017, 2018 tests, and, but we did approximate that it would be 13, and I did talk to Ms. Lindsay today, and the actuals were posted, and we came in at 18, which is still good, because we're obviously trending in the right direction, but she did notice, when she looked at the DEES website, that there was a discrepancy with what DEES is reporting and what the college board reported to us. So, she's going to follow up, but there's, there's about a, almost a point difference in what, in what they're reporting. So, if we take what the college board reported to us, would probably be closer to 14, which is where we thought we'd be as opposed to 18. So, either way, I think the key thing is, we're in good shape, we're trending in the right direction, and we'll continue to monitor this going forward, but I think the story is good there. And that's it for the education committee.
All right. Any questions? And with that, Dr. Lewis, the PD report?
All right, so everybody should have a copy, you definitely will want your copy, there's lots of charts and all sorts of wonderful things, so you definitely want to use that to look at. So, greetings to everyone, we hope everyone's had a chance to enjoy fall, and we hope everyone is rooting for your favorite baseball team.
And that would be?
The LA Dodgers. It's my last hope.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, I know. So, just a few quick notes, Ms. Murphy mentioned these as well, and Liz. Last week, we completed drafts of the PULSE faculty and family surveys, Liz, Raul, Roger, and Brianna had helped us a lot with that. We look forward to seeing the results of that. We tried to have really tightly focused questions on really important topics and questions that will also give us actionable feedback, too, and we hope to, I presume the board's going to be discussing this, we hope to have that run, the PULSE survey run again in several months, so that we can see the results, attack the problems, whatever we see, and then make progress and be able to chart our progress. That would be terrific. As Ms. Murphy said, we also had our first community council meeting, so the council consists of, we have a fairly large council this year, we have teachers, we have students, we have parents, we have administrators, and the focus of that first meeting was on community. We all shared some general ideas about how we can build a stronger community, so it was a very good, positive meeting, looking forward to working with the council as we continue this year. Our next meeting is in a couple weeks. And Ms. Murphy also mentioned the academic excellence group, and the purpose, we met, had a second large meeting with that group, and the purpose of that group, that meeting, which was on Tuesday, as Ms. Murphy said, was to go over a draft of a survey that will go to our students and our alumni about academic expectations at Amsa, whether they feel that they're challenged, or whether they feel they're not challenged. And you can see, I won't go over it now, but you can see a draft of that, it's in appendix A. It has gone through a couple of iterations, so our department chairs have looked at it, the, all the folks who came to the academic excellence group looked at it, we've revised it, and we've now sent it out to the entire staff, so that they have a chance to review it, too. So, it's, it's gone through several, several checks, and each check, it gets better and better. It's amazing what different people see and how they're able to fine-tune each question. So, on to... So on to the big update, so first update is enrollment. We'd like to thank our registrar, Linda Edwards, who's done a great job. Last year, we were, we went over our cap, and because of Linda's work as our registrar, she's helped us to bring us a little bit closer to our cap. Our state-approved cap is 966 students, last year we were at 984. The state didn't particularly take too well to that. So this year, we've gotten it down, we've gotten it down to 975, and we did that, really the only numbers we control is the grade six class, so we limited the size of the grade six class. And by next year, we will be at our state-approved cap, and we'll be able to create stable class sizes, so we look forward to very stable enrollment in the coming years. So there's a couple tables on the following pages that you can see, some very useful information. So in table three, you will see that 50% of our students are from Marlboro, and collectively 75% of our students are from our core towns, Marlboro, Clinton, Maynard, and Hudson, which is exactly what we're supposed to be doing. We're fulfilling the primary goal of our charter, creating a school, in the words of the charter, that meets the need for high-quality math and science secondary education in the Marlboro, Hudson, Maynard, Clinton region. So our demographics are very reflective of that. In terms of attrition, you can see table four. We had 31 students leave AMSA last year, which is about a 3% attrition rate. That may not appear to be particularly high, but our goal is to do better. Ideally, we don't want to lose any student, we want to attract students and keep them here. That's fairly unrealistic, because families will move, parents might have different jobs, but we certainly don't want to lose any student, because they don't feel supported, and we certainly don't want to lose any student who doesn't feel challenged. So we want to support and challenge our students at the same time.
Dr. Lewis, just a quick question.
Yes.
Probably the same question. So I understand the attrition at eighth grade because of high school, some people may decide to go somewhere else. Is the 10th grade attrition, is that mostly Mass Academy?
Yes, I think that was, but there were seven, seven kids that went to Mass Academy.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And what's the typical number of kids that leave that year to go to Mass Academy?
Four. Four.
Okay, so it's a few more were accepted this year or decided to go?
Yes, right. And that was one of the reasons behind the academic excellence committee, and the concerns expressed by several of our teachers, was that we need to figure out ways that we can consistently challenge our students. I mean, it's certainly hard at Mass Academy, because there is-
There's one thing you can't compete with.
Yes. We can't compete with the-
The year of-
The year of free tuition that they receive. That's very meaningful, but there's certainly ways, and that's what we're doing with the academic excellence committee, ways to figure out, talk to our kids, figure out what our kids need, figure out to make sure that we're challenging them, and that they will have, they will forego that one year of free tuition, because they know that AMSA is that much better. So, you know, would it always be zero? Probably not, but we certainly would like to reduce that number. We want all of our kids to be, to feel that they are challenged, every single one.
And what do we know about what drives the attrition going into high school, the eighth to 10th?
You know, my sense, Ellen could correct me if I'm wrong, is that, you know, there's always the factors of families moving, parents going to different schools, different districts. It could also be a sense that some kids by middle school, they feel that AMSA is not the right place, we don't, you certainly don't want this, but AMSA perhaps may not be the right place for them, so they want to go to a different high school.
So if you're going to move, that's the time you're going to move, but I wonder if your goal is to reduce the attrition rate, to dig into, I don't know if you do exit interviews for students the way you do for departing employees, but-
We do do exit interviews.
What's driving you to make that choice?
Yep, there are exit interviews conducted to find out.
They want to play football, or-
Yep.
You know, what's the-
There are exit interviews conducted, yep.
And I read every one of them, Chris, but Assabette is a big factor, we lose four or five to Assabette every year, St. John's is another one.
Okay, yep.
Only a couple, one or two, maybe we're back to the sending districts, but mostly it's Assabette.
Uh huh, okay.
So I actually have a question on the prior table, while we're talking about enrollment. So, about 20% of our kids come from the out-of-district towns, and on the waiting list, we always have a long, strong waiting list. Is that comparable, or is the waiting list really core towns right now? And when do we think that that number of folks and kids from out of the core district towns will go down significantly? Do we know that, based on the population?
Ellen, Ms. Lindsay.
So we have to take the siblings first. So a lot of those non-core towns are siblings of kids who are already here. And when the school first started-
Yep, got that part.
We were mostly outside, right?
But eventually, that's going to continue to decline, so I'm wondering when that's going to happen.
Well, in case in point, in ninth grade right now, we had a number of seats that opened up, and we actually went through and offered all of the kids from core towns seats, and they didn't, they didn't take them. It's a hard time to fill seats, so she's actually well into our non-core town list at this point, and we have finding that we can fill those last three seats. So it just, it all depends upon, you know, we have 150 more ninth grade students on the list, they're all from non-core towns, just depends on how many core town applications we get each year.
That's exactly what I was looking for, that's fascinating.
Moving back to this one, is the proportion of Marlboro to Hudson to Clinton to Maynard, is that the mix that we want, or do we wish it were something different?
I don't think we can't control the mix.
Well, you could market more heavily in Maynard to get more applications from there, and, no, maybe you can't.
I don't think we can.
So interestingly enough, I did do a Marlboro, so I have, I'm scheduled in a library in each one of the core towns, and I did Marlboro. Last year, when I, I mean, Maynard, when I did Maynard, they had about three people there, I had a room full. So it was a real shift for us. We have a 2% increase in each one of the core towns from last year to this year of how many kids we took in from Clinton, Hudson, and Maynard, mostly around the fact that we couldn't take kids in from Marlboro.
Right, because of the cap.
Raised up in other core towns.
So do we wish it were different, or just it is what it is and it doesn't matter?
It is what it is, it doesn't matter.
All right.
I think the only thing we could, the only thing we could measure might be the number of applications that we get from Maynard, Hudson, Clinton.
And they were definitely-
And we're seeing, you're saying we're seeing an increase in that, and I think that's a good sign.
It's also the size of the towns, too, like Hudson's a fairly large system, but my understanding is Clinton and Maynard are definitely smaller, so.
If we're happy, then I'm happy.
Logistically, it's a little more challenging, too, because of, just because of where it's located.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the future, for next year, I think, what would improve this report would be if we could look at, like the trailing three years, to see what was the attrition last year, two years ago, three years ago.
We would have rather except that our registrar's been out of the country the last two weeks.
That's fine, just, I'm not, it's not a criticize, it's a suggestion for improvement.
We can have that for you next month if you'd like.
Next report.
Next year is good.
Just wondering, the four or five that we lose to Assabette each year, is that because those students have more of an interest in trade perspectives, or?
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lindsay. So, second update on high school MCAS scores. So, again, you'll want to definitely look at the tables there. So as you can see in table five, 100% of our students were advanced or proficient in English, 99% in math, and 97% in biology. Our high school MCAS scores place AMSA at the top of all schools in the Commonwealth, and here we rely on Gene Patinelli, who did some large data crunching of MCAS scores. He examined AMSA's MCAS achievement and growth numbers in comparison to all other public schools, and according to Mr. Patinelli, who unfortunately is not here today, AMSA's math scores places number one in the state, our English scores places number three, and our science scores places number five. So you can see that there in table six. And then if you flip the page, and you're going to be looking at the chart there on page nine. So given such a ranking, it is not surprising that our high school MCAS scores were also very strong in comparison to the state average, our surrounding core towns, and to other top schools. So if you look at page nine, in that first, the first chart there, you see percentage of students who scored advanced, who scored proficient or higher at AMSA, Clinton, Hudson, Marlboro, Maynard, and then the state average for English, math, and science. And then, the next chart down there compares our scores to the top, according to the US News and World Report, the top 10 schools in the state, with Boston Latin being the number one school, AMSA being the number two. So you can see a comparison to the very top schools in the state. So our science scores, in comparison to the state averages, you can see in table seven, our science scores were 23% higher than the state average, our math scores were 21 points, 21 percentage points higher than the average state average, and our English scores were nine points higher than the state average. So certainly, hearty congratulations are in order, our scores on the high school MCAS test are outstanding. And there's many thanks to go around. We'd like to thank our department chairs, Alex Waldron, our fantastic English department chair, Dr. Scott Jurey, our fantastic science department chair, and the wizard of math, Lou Bischmidt, our fantastic math department chair. And certainly, a big round of thanks to all of our fantastic teachers, our science, math, and English teachers, all the teachers, everybody. It's not just an English teacher who contributes to success in English, or a math teacher, all of our teachers contribute to the success of all students. Their hard work, commitment to our students, and passion for the subjects they teach really make all the difference. And it's a real team effort, our school counseling, ELL, Learning Services Department, for all the support that they provide to our students. And without their work, we would not be able to help all of our students. And then, last but not least, our fantastic students for their hard work and their excellence. They have made us very proud. These are really, really terrific scores. So, transition to the middle school MCAS score, so a little different story here. So the high school MCAS scores are a very strong representation of our second core value, excellence, and we tip our hat to everybody involved in that. This year, the high school MCAS test, with the exception of science, will be a new test based on a new, based on new curriculum frameworks. So in 2016 and 2017, the state approved new frameworks in math, English, and science, so they are now adjusting the MCAS test to those new curriculum frameworks. So AMSA, like the rest of the state, is in for quite a period of adjustment in terms of assessment and accountability. And most likely, it's going to be a few years, so when we're talking about the MCAS next year, it's going to be different. It's a different test based upon a different curriculum, and it's most likely, as the state goes through this process, just like they're going through it in the middle school, it's going to take a few years of adjustment, score's going to look a little bit different, so it'll take a bit of time. And likely, a few years before the high school tests, the middle school tests, and the entire accountability system itself is fully functioning. So the middle school tests are, have been running, the new ones have been running, the high school tests are going to be new this year, and then they're going to have to integrate them together. So there's a couple comments there from the education commissioner, Commissioner Jeffrey Riley, who has said, "It's hard to find trends, because it's so new, the new accountability system, and you can't compare it to the old system." He added that, "I think the schools and districts need time to breathe, and we need time to assess this system in a deep way." Unlike the high school tests, this year's MCAS results for six through eight are based on the new test, which we just discussed. Last year's middle school tests were the first year of the new test, so this year will be the first year of a high school test. Last year's scores constituted, really, just a year of practice. DEES, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, did not factor the 2017 scores into the new accountability system, and DEES will not be using them as a benchmark for future test administrations. In fact, it's not even clear, although it looks likely, from trying to decipher the hieroglyphics that come from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it looks likely that they will be using this year's scores as the benchmark, although it's not been confirmed. Secretary of Education James Pizer has noted that the changes in this year's MCAS results for grades three through eight varied by grade level when compared to 2017, and he further stated, "This is a new assessment based on recently revised curriculum frameworks. As such, it will take time for the results to stabilize into a reliable baseline against which real improvement can be measured." So it'd be really important for all of us to be cognizant of that. The new MCAS at the middle school level, and then at the high school level, will be based upon a new scoring system that you can see right there, between 440 and 560 points, with four categories exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting expectations. And the MCAS, this new MCAS test is based upon a new accountability system, which, as you can see there, has certainly lends a lot of weight to the MCAS, but the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, is shifting the focus a little bit. There's still a strong focus on the MCAS. If you look at footnote number seven, you can see that in terms of percentages, they are putting 40% on MCAS scores, but in addition to the MCAS score, they're also going to be looking at lowest-performing students, and how lowest-performing students improve. They'll be looking at student growth, they will be looking at high school completion rates, they will be looking at the progress of English language learners, and they will be looking at absenteeism. So it's a much broader accountability system, not strictly or solely based upon the MCAS, although the MCAS certainly is a driver of it. And then based upon this new accountability system, DEES will classify schools into two very broad categories, at least at this point, schools that need assistance, schools that don't need assistance. And this year, DEES classified about 15% of schools as in need of assistance, 85%, including AMSA as not in need of assistance. So then in terms of the particular scores, if you look at table eight, on average, a very rough average, so if you look at table eight, table eight has the summary of the grade six through eight next generation for ELA, grade six, grade six math. The E is exceeding, the M is meeting, the PM is partially meeting, the NM is not meeting, the MED is medical, excused absence, right, sir? And then, so you could just follow that along, grade seven, ELA math, grade eight, ELA. So on average, about 68% of AMSA students either exceeded or met expectations on the new test. And then, just give you a second to look at some of those, and then jump-
So is the intent of the new test to essentially raise the bar?
Yes.
So we would see these proportions.
The DEES has said that they want to focus more on complex problem solving, they want schools to be more accountable to a broader range of measures, and they really want to hold schools accountable for lowest-performing students, that students can't be ignored, that we educate each and every child. So, about these scores, these scores are generally lower, they're lower than last year's scores, they're significantly lower than our results on the high school MCAS test, right? So on the high school MCAS test, we're at 98%, we're at 100%, we're at 97%, this is 68%. So we certainly want to do much better than that. Be that said, we want to do better, want to be very clear about that. We also need to be very cautious when we analyze the results of our middle school tests- We also need to be very cautious when we analyze the results of our middle school tests. The two tests, the middle school test and the high school test, are very different tests. The Commissioner of Education, the Secretary of Education have been very clear in saying, "Do not compare the tests." So it's important to keep in mind as well that AMSA's middle school scores reflected trends across the state. There were declines across the state in sixth and seventh math and grade seven English. AMSA's lower scores on the middle school tests in comparison to our high school scores are also very reflective of scores across the state. Be that said, our scores are also much higher than average state scores. So on average, in comparison to the state, 48.5% of students across the state either exceeded or met expectations. So our average score on the middle school MCAS tests are approximately 20% higher than the state average.
And if I could comment on that also, that if you look at math, so it was around 20% better. So we were 20% over the state average, both for high school as well as.
No, just for middle school.
Whereas for ELA, we were only about 9% better in high school.
Yes, right.
On the order of 20% better in middle school.
Yes.
Even though the scores are lower, compared to the state, we're doing a bit better compared to the state averages.
Yes, yes. And this week, Ms. Lindsay and I have been conducting meetings with our department chairs. We've met with Ms. Schmidt today. We met with Ms. Waldron earlier this week. And they are very busy analyzing the results, working with their teachers, and figuring out ways on this new test that we can get better. And they're setting very strong goals, and I have 100% confidence in them. So just some conclusions and thoughts of.
Another question for you.
Yep.
One thing I think it would be, be helpful to see would be, like we do with the old MCAS, would be to have a comparison versus our sending districts. Because I think that would really be.
Oh, yes.
More, more spot on to say, students of similar demographics to ours, how did they do?
Yes, we can get that too.
In a nutshell, is it the type of test, the format of the test, or the content of the test?
It's a, it's a new curriculum and new format. So teachers and departments have been working with the old test for years and years and years and years. So it's a new design. They're all computer-based tests, so it's a slight adjustment and doing things on the computer. Just takes time, and it takes time for the state to calibrate its test. I'm sure the state is not, I think they're, you know, 50% of the schools across the state are not meeting or exceeding expectations compared to a much higher average at the high school level. There's something wrong in the calibration process or in the test itself. So, and that's just going to take time to work out.
And they'll continue to change the test? So if the scores don't improve next year, for example, like how long does it take before they would change the test if it wasn't a success? Or do they not? I don't know, I'm just curious what the.
It's like Park, they walked away from Park.
Yeah, I'm wondering, like, yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
Does anyone, let me ask this question, does anyone have kids in other schools besides myself who took the test? And how was, our results were, we didn't really study it, but we had a panic attack. And I feel much better today to see this. And I haven't drilled into the results everywhere, but it was, it was really very, very different, right? What you would expect from what you're used to seeing.
Different for sure.
I mean, just, just looking at it though, it seems like, to your point, there's a calibration issue with the test because we, AMSA did proportionately better in middle school than the state, than it did in high school.
In the past, yeah.
Compared, yeah. So, so it's, it just seems something's just not quite right with the test.
Really, really different, yeah, yeah.
There's just something off.
Yeah, if 50% of the state is failing, not doing well on the test, you know, that's either a.
Design?
Terrible indictment of the state of education in Massachusetts, or it's a terrible indictment of the test.
Right.
Or it's a combination of the two.
Right, did any of the kids, did anyone take feedback from the kids when they came out to see if there was anything dramatically noticeable from their perspective, if they had taken them before?
I know, just in discussion with my son, that doing the test on the computer, especially in math, was challenging because of the different functions that you do in math. And just like having to search for those. And I know that there was sort of a reference guide used, but I think that that, just that alone, not as opposed to doing it by hand.
Right.
Yeah, that, Mrs. Schmidt actually mentioned that very point today. And they're going to be training the kids more on the computer itself.
Which is, to me, that's troubling that you, I mean, yes, the kids need to know how to use the computer, and they need to know what's what on the computer. But if they're not, if they're training, it forces them to train for the test as opposed to learn math.
We do homework, yeah, we do. Do you guys do homework on the computer for math? We do, like in Northborough, Southborough, a lot of our assignments use computer assessments. And so they do have to hunt and peck and find the way to do, you know, you get to find.
Yeah, I think I, I definitely don't want to speak for Ms. Schmidt, but my sense is, is that they've been very, a lot of their work is done on paper. A lot of their work has always been done on the board. Very old fashioned, and Ms. Schmidt is, you know, she's a wizard. She does wonderful things with our students. So it's just a period of adjustment, and she, she has said, she told us today she's going to be.
It's not easy.
Providing two train, two tests on the computer for the students so that they get more acclimated to that process.
I've used it, right? We're used to the old way.
Right.
And it's really not obvious and logical. And I use the computer all day, every day, so.
I think for a student too, from proctoring, you know, the students definitely got frustrated if they couldn't find the right thing. And so you think about kind of emotionally what that does if they're taking this high stakes test, and they know that they can't, they fixate on that one thing they couldn't find, and then that.
If you've ever sat there cursing at your monitor.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and, and you're mentioning the math, but I mean, the same challenges with the English. So I, this is a completely unfair comparison, but I know when I looked at the Park test and questions on it, I think that test was in need of great help. Because I'm not that unintelligent, and I had like a real hard time with a lot of those questions. Like for third, fourth, I mean, for lower grades, not third, fourth. But, but I think it's just a growing process for them to figure it out.
Well, it'll be great to see.
So just some conclusions about the MCAS and the new accountability system. So as, as we said, it's a system in transition, the whole system's in transition. So the middle school has been in transition, now the high school's about to go and transition. The, the science test will be the only test that will be the old test this year. They have said it may be a year or two, is that right, Sarah, before the science test actually converts? So it's this kind of long and lengthy process on top of it all. The state has said that they're very interested in providing a history test. My sense is that they're going to wait on that until all of this works out. So us history folks will probably have to wait a little bit. So the roadhead's going to be likely a little bit bumpy. And as we said, we should be, definitely want to be cautious about jumping to conclusions. This is certainly the word of the Commissioner of Education and the Secretary of Education, and they've stated this very clearly. At the same time, it's a, you know, it's a new accountability system, and, and we think it fits very nicely with our philosophy. It's a system focused on scores, growth, and how we make sure that we help our lowest performing students. So in our minds, that's an opportunity to fulfill our mission, to help all students excel, regardless of background and regardless of ability. We cannot focus on one group of students. We have to focus on each and every student and make sure that all of our students have the help that they need, because they are going to hold our feet to the fire, and we welcome that. We, we definitely welcome that. To adhere to our mission of helping all students excel, regardless of background and regardless of ability, we need to continue to make improvements and never take anything for granted in all of our student support programs, learning services, school counseling department. And here I'll put in a plug for Kate Driver. Kate Driver is the head of our school counseling department. She will be coming in next month to provide an overview of her department, our reading program and our EL program. Another thing that we're really focused on, and we're just in kind of the beginnings of the process, is of the use of data, which was a goal, one of our ED goals. And we're considering, we're talking about with our math chair and our English chair this week and our science chair, the development of a student academic tracking system that bridges the gaps between our departments. We, historically speaking, we've had, the hallmark of AMSA has always been our fantastic departments. That's been, and will always be, the secret sauce of AMSA. Fantastic departments that are run by fantastic department heads who know what they're doing, who work well with their teachers, and who know their content. At the same time, we're looking to assist our department heads and also to help coordinate our departments a little bit more. And so we're thinking of a system that could help us answer, this is just in the beginnings, a system that might be able to help us answer some basic questions such as you see there. How do we make sure that each and every student has all the supports that they need? No student falls through the cracks. So Luba's tracking math, Scott's tracking science. How do we make sure no one's lost in that transition process? Because a student is not just a math student or a science student. The student is a student across all the disciplines. How do we eliminate any crack in our student support system? And how do we make sure that all students have the help that they need? How do we get ahead of DEES to track the progress of our students? We don't want DEES coming to us and saying, "We're tracking your lowest performing students, and they're not, they're not doing well." We want to know before, long before DEES does, what our lowest performing students are doing, right? And how they're doing, how they're getting the support they need, and how they're advancing. We don't want to wait for a report from DEES saying, "Oh, jeez, you're doing bad." We want to know well before DEES does. We don't want any surprises. So, and how do we make sure when necessary, all of our departments and all of our teachers are working together for each, each and every student? So answering, these are really tough questions, and there's no quick and easy answer. But we're working with our department chairs, all of our department chairs. And here, I'm speaking of science, English, and math, they're very excited about this idea and how we can create something to help them with this. We're not sure what it will look like, but regardless of the type of system we develop or if we refine our existing, existing system. I think we're going to create something new based upon the conversations we've had so far. The answers, if we can answer these questions, they'll be invaluable. They'll help us to unearth whatever cracks exist in our existing system. They'll promote greater teamwork between our departments, our fantastic departments and our staff. They will help us get ahead of DEES's new accountability system. And most importantly, they will encourage even greater achievement amongst all of our students. Go Eagles! I know I'm over time, but I just wanted to, you may have more questions about the MCAS. You might want to take a look too in the appendix. That's the appendix related to, that our academic excellence, excellence group draft, our academic excellence group put together. And there's a, a student survey and an alumni survey as well. We don't have time to go over that, but you can definitely take a look at that. And if you wish to shoot us an email and a thought about that, that would be great.
I'm assuming the title of fantastical is meant in a hyperbolic sense and not in a literal sense? You're actually going to run the survey?
What's that?
Just making fun of the title.
Oh, no, we'll probably use that title.
It's fantastical because it's good, not because it's not going to exist.
Not because it's right.
Yes.
Not because it's hallucination.
Right.
So I would like to come back at some point in the next, I don't know, however many months, and talk more about this idea of getting out ahead of DEES. Because this is going to go on for years.
Yes.
And it's a political strategic thing about like, how could we be helping to make the rules or inspiring them? So I think it's worthy of extended discussion at some time in the not-too-distant future.
Yes, I know Alan was at a recent conference with a lot of charter school leaders. And Alan could speak to this better than I can, but my sense was that there was a lot of.
It was a combination of Department of Education presenters speaking to charter school people. You could feel some of the angst in the room around the idea of, you know, we're charter schools. We live by our charter, and we are independent, more or less, under their umbrella. But, you know, every year, they're, they're getting a little tighter in taking our independence to charter schools and shifting a little bit. So there was definitely a feeling there of concern and also about the accountability plan, how that is used differently really with charter schools than it is with a regular district school. And the district school, for example, they, they look at it, each elementary school gets their own accountability rating, the middle school, their high school. And so when it's published in the newspaper and whatnot, it, it shows the different schools separately. They average our schools together. And so whenever that hits the newspaper, it looks like, you know, we're at 68% instead of 98% and, you know, 60, whatever, whatever was there, 67%. So they, they average it together. So it's, it always, it kind of skews to be not helpful to charter schools.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I don't mean to have a discussion now, I just want to.
No, yeah, okay, I'll.
Be quiet then. Because I don't want to get in trouble, Rick, about pushing the video.
Yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, please, thank you, honors. Next, we go on to, to our business. So Roger, would you like to go over the check-in for the smart goals?
All right, certainly. So in your, in your folder, you'll find a, a one major, one of the pages that, that starts off like this, with the goal, with our trustee goals to figure. These are ones that we discussed at the January meeting and then formalized at the April meeting and approved. And so first, I think I'll just give you, I apologize for not being in the folder ahead of time. I'll just give you a minute to think, read through the goals and see what your thoughts are. And then I'm going to give, give my summary of where I think we, where I think we ended up. And then we can discuss next steps for those goals. Ready? So for facilities, I've given a check mark for the first, first item, the, that we have the assured plan for the school for this year. For the second item, it's in progress, but clearly not complete for a permanent solution. But we're working really hard on it. In communication, we have a few more challenges in this area. I think we were, so we, we have not done the video yet. We did not have a board member present at the new hire orientation for the school.
Just a point of clarification, is that a new hire as in student, sorry, teachers and staff?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
The goal beyond that was to have a board member present at the new hire orientations, teacher-staff orientation.
Got it, and that takes place in August, correct? Okay.
We get, we, we did successfully, and thanks to Jill, we, we did get the presentation to PTO.
I did an abbreviated version, but if they had room, they wouldn't mind if I did the full version on the October meeting. They haven't decided yet, so.
Great. So I think that would be like a check plus, you'll get, doing it twice. So for the board roundtable meetings, we did not do the June meeting, and the December meeting is still in the future at this point. So we did not, did not do those.
Could, could I just comment on that? So I'd like to make a proposal that for the roundtable meetings, that the. So I'd like to make a proposal that for the roundtable meetings, that the, one with the teachers be facilitated by the teacher or faculty rep? And if you, wouldn't mind like requesting board members to be able to tend it and try to figure out the date? That'd be great. And then similarly, would the parent meeting, a roundtable, let the parent rep facilitate that?
I do know in the past, at least with the teacher one, I think it was when Jess Bowen was the rep, she did kind of like excuse herself from the meeting just so that people could have that direct line of communication with the board if they so chose. So I don't know what the board's thoughts are on that and doing something similar. I don't mind either way, but I can understand both perspectives of like me facilitating versus having, you know, leaving the room and having people speak freely.
So, how does this sound? So for the December one, if you wouldn't mind facilitating in terms of at least figuring out the date and organizing, and then maybe what we can do is, if you don't mind, not participating in that first one, and then we can just ask teachers kind of like where they can get a pulse of whether they think that, you know...
Okay, yeah, like introduce it and then go. Okay. For sure.
So did I hear an action item?
Yes.
For scheduling the meeting?
Yes, yeah. So Brianna's going to take point on scheduling the teacher roundtable, and Jill's going to take point on scheduling the parent roundtable. But I would suggest that we have at least three or four board members in attendance because it really is a meaningful discussion with the teachers and the parents.
Yeah, I would second that. I think it's really important, one, just to be able to hear the concerns and the positive feedback. There's nothing like being there in person and having that interaction. I do just want to mention, though, we need to be a little careful about not going beyond what the quorum would be, but definitely if we can get four or even five folks, that's really useful.
Yes, we're capped at quorum minus one.
Okay, so five would be fine.
Thirteen or twelve?
Thirteen.
Thirteen would be seven, so you'd have six.
Seven, okay, six, okay.
Okay, um, since we, do we want to talk anything else about next steps for other communication items since we wrapped up the communication block?
Could I mention one thing? Just in terms, so this is broader in terms of just communication, and this is communication between the BOT and the administration. So Roger and I met with the administration just before this. We have a monthly meeting, and we were talking about just communication. And over the years with different administrations, the nature of communication between the POT and the administration has varied. In some administrations, they've said only one person should be, you know, communicating, in others, it's been different. So what we'd like to do is especially based on the relationships we have and the level of trust, that all board members should be always feel, should always feel free to reach out directly to the administration. They can CC myself or Roger if they feel it's appropriate because it's a, it's an issue of significant gravity that where we should be informed, but otherwise, they should feel free to just have a direct line of communication. And, you know, we'll be pulled in if we need to be, if it's something significant. But, and I would just like to echo, I think everybody is aware of this, if parents or teachers or whomever may come to you, various stakeholders do come to you, we do request that you do recommend that they go through the normal chain of escalation when they have issues. So normally, you know, if it's a parent and they're having an issue, they should talk to the teacher, and if there's not resolution, go to the department head, and if not, go to the administration, and if not, then they come to the BOT and they file a complaint. So just a reminder to everybody to kind of make sure we all follow the right chain of escalation. Thank you.
And there is a formal procedure that I've referred parents to that is new this year.
Oh, great.
So the procedure you drafted.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's, I don't know if it's on the website, but I referred, I referred parents to that already, so.
Oh, good. Can, do you know offhand where on the website it is?
Mr. Finkel, it's in the...
Trustees.
It's in trustees?
No. And just, if your concern is about...
It went home as an email to all parents, too.
Classroom, go to the teacher. If your concern is about curriculum, go to the department chair.
That's under the handbook part. Under, under, under student, under handbook.
Communication for a call with a student body.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think the only other interesting one, I think, that we could, that we could come back to discuss is what we wanted to do with bullet item number one. Don't have to solve it.
The video.
Video or equivalent. I don't think we need to discuss it now, but maybe just, I don't know, where, where should that be discussed? Do we want to discuss it at the board level? Do we want to discuss it? I guess it's governance.
Yeah, maybe governance.
Yeah, maybe we can cover it in the next...
All right, I will, I will take an action item to add that to the governance agenda.
Given that there's no marketing committee.
All right, onward to refinement and clarification of mission and values. So again, a large check mark for the core values. We have deferred on the school model at this point, but the core values is rolled out and being lived already.
Check plus plus.
So deferred meaning that we're not even going to try for this here?
So, I guess I defer to Louis's agenda.
It's not a suggestion, no way. Didn't really mean to.
No, my thought is that we have a lot of work to do with the core values and getting knowledge of the core values and instilling them to add a motto to that, just not needed at this point.
Makes sense.
For the next one, we have, this is, I think, work that Chris had actually started for the statement of guiding principles, and I'm not sure what the status of this is. We had had a draft of it a while back, the statement of guiding principles, and I'm not quite sure on the current status of where that, what the status of that document is.
I think it was like consumed and subsumed in all of the stuff around clarifying our values and, and I don't know what's become of it.
So can I comment on, sorry?
No, I was going to say, I think my recollection was out of our last strategic meeting, well, I shouldn't say the last one, but the one we had in January. I thought that that was going to be incorporated along with the, there was a task force around the mission, and I thought this was a piece that was going to be rolled into that back in January.
I'm going to have to go back and check the minutes, I think.
Yeah, okay, that may be the case. I don't recall that, but that may very well be the case. If that's the case, then that's fine, we have a next step. I think we'll have to look that up. Just in terms of whether it was rolled into the values, I don't think it was, or I put it this way, I don't think it should be. Because the point of the statement of guiding principles was people, I think it originated from the notion that people would sometimes say, "Well, that's in alignment with the charter, or that's part of our charter," or "It's not part of the charter." And the challenge is charter has lots of stuff, some of it is relevant, some of it is not relevant, and it changes and evolves, and some of it relates to the founding. And so the intent here was to get, distill maybe 12 points or however many points that are kind of like, I wouldn't say absolutely unchanging, but fundamental and foundational. So when you mention the charter, you kind of like point to those 12 items and you see whether you're in alignment with it. So I think that was kind of the underlying intent, and so that's why I don't think the values, though the values relate, but they're distinct and different, I think. So I think to that point, yeah, let's look at the, look at the January...
January strategic session.
And see where it should go.
Yeah, because it was tied into the mission. There was a group that was going to be looking at the mission, and I seem to remember this was a piece that was going to be vetted out and eroded into that.
Yeah, and there's so much of this developmental work going on in so many dimensions that, like it was around that time, I think, that disappeared. I don't know where it went.
Yeah, exactly.
Because there's so much related stuff going on.
Right.
So I think, I think for this one, we should just, each of us do our homework, send me, if you, if you find something, send it to me, and I will collate it and report back next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to give us a date?
The homework is to find anything that has already been prepared or to create something?
No, I'm not asking to create anything, but sort of for each of you to go look at the minutes from either the strategic meeting in January, the strategic meeting in March, or if you've worked on this document, send me a note, and I'll report back next meeting with what, sort of the current state of where this is at. So final one is move toward competitive salaries. I would say we, that we have, you know, that we met our medium range, that we have a two-year contract with increased salaries. We have still worked, I think we still have work to do in regards to the associated revenue objectives, especially focused toward the long range. And the second bullet item, we are in progress in regards to developing a development plan. So, and I believe we're going to be, get a report out in mid-December. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. So that's, is there other discussion about?
No, just a suggestion, because I, maybe this is just me and lack of tracking, but maybe when we do this again next year, if we have goals that have deadlines, which we did on purpose to make them SMART goals, that we should probably try to preemptively put checkpoints right before, or maybe the previous board meeting to know, oh yeah, August 15th, we should better write that motto up or something, you know?
Maybe put it in an Excel spreadsheet with the dates so that we can...
And I don't know how far ahead we can throw stuff out there and board on track, like, you know, maybe set up the whole year, I don't know, some way get ahead of...
Right.
So the second largest, the second hardest thing after creating goals is tracking them.
So we do have, in our idea about calendar, and that's why it's on the agenda, is that quarterly, we are going to be reporting out against the goals. This is actually, unfortunately, this is our first report out against our goals that we approved, that we set up in January and approved in April, so we're working toward this. But I do think that if we had a spreadsheet-like thing, or we could even check in on it monthly just to say, maybe not a report out, but just everyone can take a look at the monthly forecast and see how we're doing.
Along those lines, one thing we may want to do, not necessarily force it, but if we're doing the quarterly reviews, we might want to set due dates the month following a quarterly check-in, so we see, oh, it's coming up next month, boy, we better scramble or whatever to address it. So that we can do next year.
And that's, that's the summary of the trustee goals review.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay. Next item is treasurer transition from Lucy to Kristen. So Lucy has done a fantastic job at being a member of executive committee and also chair of the finance committee. These, I don't know, how long has it been, Lucy?
My gosh. You know, I can't remember exactly how long it's been.
Well, it's been that long that we can't even remember.
Well, yeah. It's actually only been about nine months, I think, that I've been the actual treasurer, to be quite honest. But been on the finance committee for two and a half years.
Well, you've done a lot in that time, so thank you, and thanks for all your other service. And Lucy has transitioned to another role in her other job. This is, she has two jobs. And so in that, I'm sorry?
Technically.
Technically, yes. One pays, one pays a lot better than the other.
Yeah.
But in view of that, Kristen has been very gracious to say she'd be willing to step in as a member of executive committee as treasurer, and then take on also the role of chair of finance committee. And so we do, I'm sorry?
Of one and a half, no, two, two and a half.
Two and a half.
A half, yeah, still?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we do need to take a vote on that? So if someone wouldn't mind making a motion?
Sure. A motion to transition from Lucy to Kristen for finance and treasurer.
Second.
All in favor? So move?
Technically, we'd need a separate vote to approve Kristen for a member of the executive committee, because I think it's by name instead of by office.
By name instead of by office? So, I'm sorry, can you clarify that?
So the treasurer is not an executive?
Right. The executive committee, which is a subset of the board, can take actions in the event that the board can't meet its quorum. And the, and it's, the current executive committee is the four officers plus Polly. But they are by name, i.e., the executive committee is listed by Rick, Roger, Lucy, Raul, and Polly.
Is it not by role?
It's not by role.
Okay.
Although they're, they tend to, they tend to be the same.
So let me see if I can say this correctly. So could we have a motion to have Kristen join the executive committee?
Now, is that at the same time replace?
And that replaces Lucy as a member of the executive committee?
Because if it's not by role, we have to reschedule.
Okay, so I move that we replace Lucy with Kristen as the treasurer on the executive committee.
As a member.
As a member of the executive committee, sorry.
Thank you.
I second.
I need flashcards.
All, all in favor?
So Lucy's second?
I second it, yeah.
Yes. Very quick on that second.
Yeah.
On the first, on the first vote we did there, so Kristen and Lucy can vote on that, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
I believe Kristen, technically Kristen abstained on both votes. Is that correct?
Well, I wasn't sure if I could vote or I had to accept.
You may, you may vote.
Okay, I vote, I vote yay for both.
Yay!
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And next up is governance update.
So for governance update, we talked about three items. First, we talked about creating, or continuing the discussion agreed in advisory council. Second, we talked about incorporating the alumni more into the school. And finally, we talked about board recruiting. So go back up to the top. We started a little bit with the naming of what should we call this advisory council, and there seemed to be two names that were thrown out. One was, I'll just do them in alphabetical order, was Board Advisory Council, and the other was Trustee Advisory Council. Governance sort of was leaning toward the Board Advisory Council as the name of this organization. And the purpose of this was a place for people either that were becoming, coming in as trustees or, or someone like such as Mike Glass, who was stepped down as a role of trustee, or any resource that the board could use to help be better. So is, are there opinions about either name? People like Board Advisory Council?
Why was, why that, how did that one end up winning?
Sort of the plurality of the governance committee liked it more than trustee advisory council.
Is there a name that you would...
If you have something, I'm horrible at naming, so.
I think either is fine.
Yeah. I don't think it changes what the role is.
Right, it doesn't change what the role is. So we'll come, we'll come back with the final, the next step in here is on my plate, we're going to look at publicly available documents and from other schools and universities that have such advisory councils and come up with a core set of values or the goals as to what a member of the advisory council does. And at that point, I expect the goal is, goal is to come back next meeting with a board advisory council and a policy or founding document to say, you know, what is a member of the advisory council doing? Questions on that?
It's got a good acronym, BAC, back.
You're back.
You're back.
That's the name.
They have a name. Second, we talked about ability to incorporate the alumni more into the board of trustees or into the school post. There are actions going on. Our, our next steps is we'd welcome, we'd eventually welcome the alumni liaison role to the board, but I... eventually welcome the alumni liaison role to the board, but the first step toward this is to, for the alumni association to become official, and make that, make themselves official, and I know that that's work that Ellen is working with alumni to have happen, so when, once we have an official alumni association, we would welcome their feedback and plan to incorporate them in the board. Finally, we spent a lot of time discussing ideas and toward recruiting more board members, we looked at, there's a brainstorming session, but Pauline had some great ideas as far as professional organizations to contact, people to contact, we actually have a candidate that looked very promising that Pauline was gonna follow up with, and we're looking for other, other board members, other board member candidates, so if you're, know people who you think would be interested in joining the board, have them contact me, and I will get it out to the committee, the task force that's involved with board recruiting. Questions? That ends governance.
That would be great, thank you. Next, development update?
Yes, so we weren't able to meet, but we did receive a report from Rick Tagliatelli and from Ellen the other night, so Rick has been with us now for a month, September 17th is when he started, and he has been basically kind of investigating and doing informational meetings with a variety of people inside the school, and to a lesser degree outside the school, he's already been doing some work on, you know, the things that are special about AMSA that are significant for fundraising, and some initial exploration into potential donors, rating our donors, understanding our audiences, so all of that is in motion, and what we would like to do is ask for time on our next meeting to have Rick and Ellen come in and do a presentation on what they're doing, and to begin to talk about kind of how we take the next steps, because rather than just having, you know, Rick do his, you know, three months here, whatever it is, and come out with a plan, there's really this intermediary step with getting us better educated on how we might evaluate such a plan, and preparatory work about kind of what we would be looking for in terms of developing a culture of giving, understanding donors, understanding, so that kind of stuff, and so we'd like to schedule that for our next, for our next board meeting here, and for half an hour?
Ooh, that seems a long time.
Twenty minutes anyway, I would like.
Yeah, but I think it's gonna be presentation, I think there's gonna be a lot of Q and A and a lot of discussions, so I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea to think about 25 to 30 minutes, but don't think of it in terms of maybe like 10 minutes of presentation and then...
I think maybe 15, well, we can, we'll work it out.
Okay. I'd suggest at least 10 minutes for Q and A.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, at least 50% for Q and A, but...
So could I just confirm how much time, total time do you think we need?
Total time of 30.
30, yeah.
Fifty, fifty.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, great, thank you. Any questions? Could I also just confirm, so we're going up to closing items, wrap up in retrospective, so this is relevant, so for next, I just wanted to talk about what we are going to cover in the next meeting, that may be different from the regular schedule, so one is the update you were talking about, we're gonna have Kate speak also, 20 minutes for her? Is that reasonable? 15, okay. And...
Plus five minutes for Q and A.
Yeah.
Plus five minutes for questions and answers after she speaks.
Okay, great, at least, any, any other items for next month? Okay, great, just in terms of retrospective, if we can go around really quickly, folks have any comments on how this meeting was conducted today? Any room for improvement? Any changes?
Timing wise, we're 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
Okay, that's good.
I'd say I love the tables, if we can just get the comparison, as we said, for, for next year, but I think that the tables are very, very helpful when looking at the data.
Yeah, they were, they are.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I already made this comment, but, you know, when it comes to goals or things that the board should be aware of as far as progress, I mean, we, we have a governance responsibility, which means we set things that other people execute, but I think we have to wear our part of the burden in our shoulders to keep things on track, so.
I agree.
We should make ourselves accountable.
I think it helps, were we doing quarterly reviews of the goals before?
I don't think so.
This is kind of the first time?
This is the first time, but I think, I like the idea of continue the quarterly goals, but even just a monthly check-in, say, so that it's top of mind, or spreadsheet, or some, you know, something that would take like one minute, you know, just, something that we can look at on the board and say, yep, we're, we're making progress, or whoops, we forgot about that one.
Okay, great.
Excuse me, well, what was the first comment for me, I couldn't hear it through the...
About the goal tracking, Sullivan?
It was the goal checking.
Was it goal tracking?
Yeah, so meaning, when, I made the comment earlier, when we're going through the board goals, that it would be good to, for next time, to either schedule when we were gonna talk about those before the due date, or like Rick said, to have a quarterly review of goals, so my comment was, and I don't know if this is what you didn't hear, that in general, we set goals and we define governance as a board, and then somebody else executes, like the staff and administration, I think we ourselves also have to have some of that on our shoulders to keep things going, so.
And that was the first thing you mentioned, before the tables were helpful, was it the same comment, I missed the first part.
No, the first comment was that we were on time.
10 minutes.
Sorry, sorry, I thought you meant, yeah.
Any, any other comments? Okay, so with that, we'll be adjourning to executive session to discuss litigation and strategies, as well as consider the purchase and lease of real property, because to do so in open session could compromise our position, and we will not be returning to open session. With that, could I have a motion to?
Need to say, say, listen, we invited?
We will be inviting, who are we gonna be inviting? Lisa, Leana, and Ellen. Okay, thank you. And Anders, thank you.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Also Pauline may be, may be joining us for executive session as well.
Thank you. Is that approved? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very cute.